Please with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everybody who's here. We'll call Mr. Lombard.
Ohm.
Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Clumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Here.
Schrader.
Yes.
Alright, with that, if there are no changes that need to be made to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please.
Second?
There's been a first and a second. We'll call vote, Mr. Lombard.
Odie. Schrader.
Yes.
Clumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Ohm.
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Conflict of interest disclosure waiver requests, there are none. Community input, I did not see anything on the agenda or getting a notification about any tonight. So that takes us to our first item under general business, under oral reports, the good news report from Brandon Valley Middle School.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to spend a couple of minutes talking about the one-to-one initiative here at the middle school. I have Kelsey Hoff here, and she is our math teacher in the 8th grade. She's also getting her masters in technology at the University of Sioux Falls, and she's kind of our go-to person. She has a lot of committees and sits on a lot of our technology committees, and she's going to take you through some things. I'm just going to kind of walk you through. We've been in it for, you know, a semester now. To be quite honest with you, it's going better than I think any of us anticipated, and I think Ms. Hoff will allude to that. Obviously, it's always a learning process, and we're going to learn every year. We've already found some things out that we need to change next year, minor, but still things that will help us down the road. If you remember right, our professional development this year is all on our one-to-one, so we just finished our last, not our last, but a professional development day a couple of weeks ago. We gave the teachers an opportunity to share with one another. I'm a big proponent of allowing teachers to teach teachers, learning from one another, so I think that was a valuable experience. I think it's helped our kids. Our kids have really taken responsibility with those devices. Up to this point, we've had one screen that has been broken, and that really wasn't their fault, to be quite honest with you. We've had like three or four bags where the zippers have broke, and we sent those back in because they're under warranty. You know, we learned a little trick that all the bags look the same, so we have to do something to identify each bag, so we put a little name tag or ribbon or something like that on it. But, like I said, I think this is a project that's, we're always going to learn from year to year, but overall, it's been a tremendous asset, not only to our students, but to our teachers also. So, from the minister's standpoint and from Bill and I, we say thank you. It truly has been a wonderful first six months with these devices, and we look forward to the years to come with that. With that being said, Ms. Hoff, go ahead.
Alright, that is actually the first thing I put on here, was just thank you. Your guys' approval of our devices has been huge. There's a lot of things that happen on a regular basis that kids are just in the norm now. The first month of school, there was a lot of training and habits to get into, and it's just automatic now for them. And that's huge. You think, really, putting devices in there, it's been a tremendous help, so thank you guys for approving this. Something simple, our science, social studies, history, and health textbook is all through McGraw-Hill, which is really nice because our connect to add one login, they can access all of those textbooks online. We don't carry those textbooks between classrooms. We have a copy for them. Alex is obviously my strong suit. There are days that what I had planned is totally different, but based off of what the kids come in with their information. Also, the online testing environment, three years ago when we adopted McGraw-Hill for math made a huge difference, I truly believe, in our test scores. Kids' comfort levels of doing math on a computer, prior to that, they panic, "I don't have to write anything down because it's on a computer." Well, we've gotten that habit out of them now. And just the variation of problems, repetition, some kids need four problems to be able to master it, some needs seven, eight, nine, 10 on there, and Alex provides that opportunity. What's called Learn Smart in Science is like the Alex version. They've been working with this, they still have a lot of questions, they said, that they need to. What I like about it is that it'll ask them a question, sometimes it's multiple choice, sometimes it's fill-in-the-blank, sometimes it's select-all. If the kid doesn't know, they can click a button, it takes them right into the online textbook to read about that topic, which is really nice. I could see that being implemented a little bit more. It's, the first year's tough to deal with that. They got a lot to look over, so that's just one quick example there. I asked a couple of teachers, just, "Can you give me a variation of instruction that you do that you didn't do previously?" A hyperdoc is a big piece. I've strongly encouraged teachers, when you're working with projects, things that kids are going to work one-to-one on, or, sorry, not one-to-one, but on their own pace, instead of answering the same questions 15 times, kind of give them an outline. So I did transformations here, give them, "Here's the information that you need." This is just a Word document, but it is full of hyperlinks, so they can click on translate, takes them out to my YouTube channel, something, ah, this one actually, I didn't, sorry. I didn't create, but I found a quick, one-minute video for them. Here's a video out on my YouTube that's lengthier, goes a little bit further in depth, and then they can go to the online assignment. Kids are able to come back to this document to constantly know, "What am I doing next?" Instead of, "Hey, Ms. Hoff, what do I do next? What do I do now? What do I do now? What do I do now?" And you a little crazy the 15th time you're asked that in the same day. So, this is one thing that, I just threw up mine, a lot of teachers have started to do, even if it's just simple, where to come back to, a hyperdoc on there. One of my requisitions this year was to be able to purchase from teacher-paid teachers, like a breakout box, but in a classroom. This is kind of hard to understand because it's, you don't have it, but they put their names in so that I have that for documentation. It gives them a story, we usually read this out loud, "What are you going to be doing? You have 30 minutes to break the code." Then, they have a piece of paper that, this one was for actually solving equations, they have to work their way through this page, and if they do it correctly, the numbers that they put in here will take them to the next code if they put in it correctly. So if I just type something in here, and it says, "Nope, keep trying," then they got to go back and they got to figure out where their mistake is made. But they also have to be cautious because people around them, hearing them, could give away what they're doing as well. Once they get through the fourth level, it says, "Congratulations." They can hit submit, and then it records the time that they got done with it, so I can see who's able to do it the quickest. Just a variation of a review scenario for them. One purchase of this was kind of nice because I figured out how to do the coding, so I can modify this now, based off of what level math classroom I'm using it in, whether it's my advanced students or my kids that are, need a little more TLC in what they're doing, I can make sure I have problems that are appropriate for them. This one I really liked, Mrs. Smedzrude offered this up to me, and she said she's been a little more front-heavy here. I apologize, I thought this was not locked. She's a little more front-heavy on the information that she gives them, so they go through and learn about the topic, and then she can come back and ask them questions. Kind of the same thing as the hyperdoc, so that they're not going a bunch of different places to find the information. She used Google Slides, and so she has things that are embedded in here, getting to their online step-by-step, click here for a direct link, videos. Meanwhile, they have another document that they're filling out, some questions that she answered, and at the end, then they take their new information into the next unit. So instead of her going through all the explanation, just gives the kids an opportunity to infer on their own before they come together. So, this was, I liked it, the questions that she got to go with it, she said is always modifying what she's doing, but has been helpful on there. I have to echo Mr. Thorson, I think our transition has gone smoother than we expected. Still hiccups, things to change next year, looking towards that as well, but Morgan Bobzine has been a huge help for us too, different things like that, so.
Kelsey, do you just want to talk to the board how you videotape your lessons and how kids are, have that ability? I think that's another important direction in which not only have you taken, but some other ones also.
This is, I started a, oh gosh, not my first year, but following that, so this is actually my fifth year, so for four years, oh, I just deleted that video. I can go out to my YouTube here, though. I record every lesson that I teach, which seems odd, but then I'm able to select which has been the best. I teach the same lesson multiple times a day, so depending on which class that you're in with me, intro students, "It was gone last Friday, Ms. Hoff," you go on and you look, you're like, "Oh, you covered the distance formula." I select the distance formula. I have a neat device called a Fujitsu laptop, it swivels and lays completely flat, and I've scanned in our computer, or our textbook, onto my computer, so it's projected up onto the wall, so as I write on here, it's exactly in their math book where they should be writing it, so they have a good guidance as to where should I be taking notes, what should I be writing down. We saw that transition of, I say a lot of things that you should also write down, but this has cut back on the amount of, you don't want to listen to my voice this whole time, but, get to where I draw out here. This has cut back on the frustrations of what homework do I have, what did I miss on there. So what I write on my screen shows up, and it's extremely matched, spot-on to my handwriting, so the kids can actually read it. So this is out there, some of them subscribe to my YouTube channel, others of them just check it when they're absent. If I jump ahead here, so, I have it muted right now, but you see my, it records my entire computer screen and anything that I say, so you hear the classroom discussion as well. You don't always hear the students' voices because the microphone is on the laptop that's in my hands, but I try to repeat it for them, so. I would encourage anybody to go to this.
Do you ever do the full-fledged flip-the-classroom, or like Molly Ring, I think used to do that?
Um, I have done some where I want them to go ahead of time. I go back and forth. We weren't one-to-one when I tried that, I tried to do a chapter, and I was having, well, I didn't have a computer at home, I didn't have a device. Now that we're one-to-one, that should be not as much of an issue. My only frustration, and I've met with Chris and we've talked about this, is our content filter doesn't allow my videos to be opened until the following morning on our devices. We've looked at it, we can't change the time that it refreshes, and my kids just know that. It'll work on their home computer, it'll work on their cellphones, but until the next day, they can't get to it. So like if a kid's gone on a trip, I just say to them, like, "Do you have a different device?" Because it won't be available till the following morning. "Yep, we'll be good," or they watch it later. So that's the only frustration. I think flipping a classroom could be easier now. I can't say that I have a student that has told me they don't have internet. Maybe they don't, and they just have worked way around it, but we do online assignments, I'd say, three times a week probably, on average, and I don't have an issue with it's incomplete because I don't have internet, so.
I know my daughter enjoyed that, when they did that just for the board, where they teach the lesson, and that's your homework, and so you go home the night before and you watch the lesson on your computer, and then when you come to class, next day you work on problems in class, and then the teacher is available to help you through that whole situation. That was a good tool for my daughter, I know.
That is something I look to, it'd be interesting. This is getting used more and more. The first year I did it, nobody ever really went out there, and now it's like, "Hey, Ms. Hoff, I was gone yesterday, but I'm caught up." Okay, cool. Less makeup work that I've tracked down on there.
Just talk about a little bit, as I look at this program and, you know, the buy-in level, I'm sure at each school and systems are different, and I would think with your expertise and leadership with Mr. Thorson, talk a little bit on maybe how you're assisting other teachers in their classroom, you know, because their skill level's all at a different point, you're probably on the high end of this deal, but talk a little bit about that, how you've got maybe some other teachers you're assisting and helping to maybe do some of this stuff.
Absolutely, so Morgan Bobzine does a Tech Mondays as well, and I've been helping her with that. The in-service that we had the other day was really nice because it was, a lot of the teachers were like, "You've shown me so many things, I just, when I'm trying to do it, it's 8 o'clock at night, and then I have no resource at that time of night." So I shared, I echoed that in a survey I put out to Mr. Thorson and Mr. Frecking, and they said, "Okay, so we need to give them time amongst one another," and that was really helpful. "Hey, I've used this program, I encountered this problem," type of thing. So, simple emails, calls in, I've spent after-school time kind of showing them, I always talked about hyperdoc. "Hyperdoc, it's so easy," and somebody finally said to me, "Yeah, it's easy for you, you've done this," you know, and I'm like, "Okay." So, I actually created a hyperdoc, teaching them, "This is how you do this." I threw it out there, "Here it is, if you want it, if there's something that you missed, I will gladly help you." I've tried to provide, you know, with Morgan too, she and I have kind of bounced back and forth, what is most useful on there, and I have a million resources. I haven't necessarily used them, but my professor at USF has shared tons of stuff that I could continue to share. I'm kind of at the point where I, people, I need somebody to say to me, "I want to do this, how do I do it?" Because otherwise, I feel like we're just feeding, 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 and overwhelmed, maybe is the word, on there. I think it's a learning curve too, just to have the devices the first year. Next year, I think, we might see a bigger change as to flipping classrooms or procedures and things like that. I can even see a change second quarter, but even second semester, what teachers are doing and what kids are doing automatically. Like I say, even watching videos and things like that, our learning curve is going to be less every year, I feel like.
I have a quick question. The examples you shared were really good, thank you for doing that. I'm curious if you've seen, and this is for both, if you've seen an increase in student as creator with the one-to-one initiative, whereas the student is able to do more creating, as opposed to in the past when they didn't have the one-to-one device with them?
I think our creativity, like, the kids are so, you might give them a topic and they're not willing to stretch out of the box, but you give them a device, like, the other day I was watching on our land school program, thank you for purchasing that, so that we are able to monitor what is going on, that's a huge help. I was watching a kid.
Very expensive.
Worth every penny, though, I promise you. In the simple things of, I can see where a kid is frustrated, maybe a kid's not going to come up and ask for help, and I watched this kid, and I'm like, "What is going on?" He had figured out how he can create to write over top of his math homework. So, an online program, now he was too lazy to go get a sheet of paper, but he could do it on his touchscreen, had it all written out, could select the right answer. So something simple like that, I was like, "What are you doing? Like, back up and show me what you're doing." And at first, I'm like, "Get a piece of paper." And I'm like, "Okay, I picked my battle here, they're showing their work, they're showing me the process on there," so that was pretty cool. Simple things too of creating videos is a big thing for kids, their creativity in that, automatic for them. They flip that screen, there are two different cameras on there.
What are they using to create the videos?
Um, I'm not sure what specific they've used, we went through, Morgan showed, we did Bitable, Adobe Spark, and just the photo editor or video editor that was on the Windows option on there. Depends on the length of your video as well, and what you're wanting in them, so. I think their creativity is going to stretch out of the box the more we allow them to and encourage them to. I still think there's apprehension from teachers, they're not confident in that level too, which is something, as a group, we have to work together on, what has worked for you, what hasn't worked for you. That's getting better, people are, one of the things that I appreciated, people shared their failures, you know, they're like, "I tried this and it flopped so bad for me," and then it was like, "Okay, let's figure out why it flopped," or, "Hey, I tried that, what can I do?" I tried to show, there's an online website called wiser.me, you can create blended worksheets, sorting bins, vocabulary that you can draw lines to, you can type in a paragraph and then remove words so that kids have to fill in the blank, and it's all in the same document, kids can save where they are, go back to it later. And we found out there was a glitch in it when I had them sign up as students, then they couldn't go turn around and be teachers. Oops on my part. We got it figured out, they have a very good help section, they're very responsive to that, so it was nice for them to get to see the student side of it, but it actually screwed up their account, and we can work on that. But, that's one that the kids have enjoyed, because it's not the same old, it's not a worksheet that I'm drawing lines to, but I like it, it looks a lot like smarter balance-esque questions, select all that apply, or here's a bunch of irrational and rational numbers, drop them in the appropriate bin, and the math type actually looks very close, just for my classroom anyway. I encourage you guys to come sometime, like, you're always welcome in my room. I think it's interesting to see how fluid they are, the kids are, automatic in the things that they do with laptops, so.
I've got one question. This is our first semester, we've just finished our first semester with one-to-one. Okay, can you sort of evaluate where we are now versus the last couple of years? Are our kids further advanced in all their subjects that they're taking, or are we right on where we have been?
I don't, I'm not sure academically I could assess that. I would say their motivation and their interaction with you in the classroom is different, absolutely. It's a tough toss-up on that one, I guess.
And I would agree, Greg, with that. I think it's too early to tell on that. I don't, honestly, I don't think it's hurting us by any means, you know what I mean? I think it is stretching our teachers and our kids out, to be quite honest with you, and Dan makes a great point about creativity. That takes some time, and like Carrie said, each teacher's different. I mean, I've got some teachers who are very tech-savvy, and they can reach themselves out there and that sort of thing, but it's one of the things that Bill and I stress with our teachers is, is stretch yourselves out, even if it fails, that's okay. We can figure out why it failed and change that. So we are big proponents of stretching yourselves out and trying things, even if they don't work always, we can learn from sometimes our failures, just like we all do, to be quite honest with you. So I think it's too early to, and I don't even know after one year whether we're going to know that, I think it's going to take some years to decide that, but I would be shocked if it didn't benefit our kids, to be quite honest with you. Like Kelsey said, it's amazing how tech-savvy our kids are right now, it's amazing, and how they've taken responsibility of those devices, and they really value them, to be quite honest with you. Do we have issues? Absolutely, but they're not nearly as many and as great as I anticipated they would be. And, you know, Kelsey brought up land school, awesome, it's awesome.
That's really cool for a testing environment, too.
Exactly, there's so many things you can do with that.
Yeah, when we do smarter balance, they're in a web browser that you can't get out of, and so like, when I give type of testing, like, I can lock out the calculator, I can lock them out of any website, basically, I can hold them in on that. Simple things of guiding their attention, like, okay, the same, they've asked me the same question about the same problem. I can click a button, it blanks their screens, I know they all are here, they're not still trying to click ahead and work on different problems, so, simple things like that. It does help if kids are off doing things that are inappropriate, absolutely. It only takes one or two shutdowns, and they're all very focused back again, but it's been nice too with like Chris to be able to.
Our tech department, Chris does a great job over there with our filtering system. You know, if there's something that we find out that is not appropriate for school and that sort of thing, I mean, he locks it down right, you know what I mean?
Or even the flip side of it, like, "Hey, I need this."
Oh yeah, it could be on the flip side. It's something that would be valuable for our classroom, so we have a great working relationship with that tech department in that sense, too. You know, I can give you another example, right now, part of our professional development within our staff is to read the energy book, or, excuse me, Energy Buzz, it's a short read, that sort of thing, but Bill created a Google discussion amongst our teachers, and we are, they're going like crazy right now, discussing the book and sharing ideas and whatever, and it's truly a valuable experience, and Bill and I were just talking about that just before we left school today, of, I think we're learning a lot from and benefiting from what the teachers are putting down in this. So, it's just another, you know, way that we communicate with one another and things such as that, so it's been really a, truly a positive experience for us, so, thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much for sharing with us. Next, that takes us to administration reports, the superintendent's report, Superintendent Larson.
Very good. I'll tell you what, before I start, obviously hats off to our tech department for the smooth rollout of those devices. I mean, they distributed 700 devices to 7th and 8th graders, and it was flawless. I don't think I heard one negative comment about the rollout, and then obviously hats off to the administration and our staff on the utilization of that technology. You know, when we adopted it, one thing that we talked about was, what type of results would we get? I think when we hear about the increased engagement, increasing student engagement, will undoubtedly, hopefully, lead to increased achievement, so. With that, I also want to hats off to our kids, one broken screen, if you'd have told me that, I would have definitely lost on the over, it's unbelievable.
Mr. Schleckway should have a in-service.
Yeah, so, all the individuals who contacted me and expressed concerns about their middle school having a device and then breaking it, I tell you what, our middle school kids are knocking responsibility out of the park, so I'm going to knock on some wood right now, but great job, middle school students for taking responsibility for that device. Well done, Principal Thorson and Principal Frecking. So with that, just wanted to provide the board an update on a few quick items. Our work environment survey, BV Listens, has been completed by 246 certified staff members and 126 classified staff members. Certainly appreciate the participation in that survey. The link has not closed yet, I'll probably close it tomorrow, it was scheduled to be closed Friday, so anyone who's listening or hasn't completed it yet, still have a little time to finish that up. In the near future, you will be receiving a presentation and taking action on graduation requirements. I would tell you that right now, the Brandon Valley requirements, what we're looking at doing is requiring a little more social studies, or I should say, specific coursework in social studies than the state requires. However, we would like to have the ability to be flexible in the event that we have like a senior in high school move in and they don't have a specific class. We're talking about requiring geography and world history as a standard component of our graduation requirements, as opposed to the less scripted version out of the state. There's a few other tweaks and changes that we would propose, but very closely aligned to the state. You'll receive a presentation and take action on that here in the coming month. Kidergarten screening registration is open, individuals need to contact their respective elementary for information. As previously announced, we have two school board seats, both three-year terms, information is outlined there, certainly contact the business office if you have any further questions. Staffing requests, we're in the process of working through our five-year plans and our staffing requests for the 1920 school year, anticipate having those to you here in February, and getting those positions advertised shortly thereafter, with recommendations to hire coming following that. Teacher negotiations timeline, we're in the process of finalizing the actual dates that we will be meeting with the BVA and the Personnel Welfare Committee themselves. We'll obviously have some negotiation preparations as a whole board prior to that. Timeline is outlined there for your review. We anticipate to ratify the master contract at our April 8th board meeting. We do have additional meetings scheduled in the event that we're not able to come to terms by that board meeting. The budget process, as previously discussed, is currently in motion. You will be receiving a preliminary capital rate budget in March. I will tell you that we may have a few large items come for your approval prior to that March board meeting, to get the process rolling on bids and requests for proposals and those types of things, whether it's school buses, a couple of school buses, or whether it's for asphalt, some of those projects, we just need to. for asphalt, some of those projects, we just need to get moving on those to ensure that we get the best price possible. Other than that, the budget process is outlined there. I want to provide you with a quick legislative update, Associated School Boards, and also school administrators of South Dakota, both their websites have links for tracking bills. I would suggest if you have an interest level in current legislation that's working through the, through the system, you review those resources. I would like to thank the Brennen Valley Chamber of Commerce and Bethany Meadows for holding our legislative coffees for, in our, in our area, our District 10 and 25 reps attend that. Myself and Mr. Lundberg attended this last Saturday, Bethany Meadows, that was good information. And then the, the next scheduled event, Bethany Meadows for a legislative coffee, if anyone's interested, is Saturday, February 23rd, begins at 9:00 AM. I would note, Brennen Day at the Legislature has been postponed from this Wednesday to Wednesday, February 27th. That has a specific impact on us, because we were sending our high school student council to Brennen Day at the Legislature. I would be excited to tell you that we conferred with the company that's providing us transportation, and we got ourselves all slotted to go on the 27th, the bus was available, so we're good to go on the 27th. Hopefully, it's a little warmer in February. Superintendent's legislative reception will be held this Wednesday, I will certainly attend that event in Pier, and then the Associated School Board's Legislative Day, which is open to board members. I do know that our Chair of our Legislative Committee, City Affairs, State Affairs, and Legislative Committee member Saxor will be in attendance. If anyone else is interested in attending, please let us know, and we can get you registered for that event. Superintendent Evaluation Contract timeline is outlined for your review. This next second meeting in February, you will receive a good news presentation from the high school, they will provide us with an update on the post-secondary night that we held in conjunction with our first semester parent-teacher conferences, and then also where we are at on our career night, or career potential workforce potential event that we're hosting in conjunction with our second, second semester parent-teacher conferences here at the high school, and then in March, you will hear from our elementary buildings. Please note, there's no school Friday, February 15th, Monday, February 18th. We will have school on Thursday, March 14th, that is a snow day, we will have a makeup day, we will be in session, there will be no school on March 15th. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Larson. I don't hear any questions, so thank you again. That takes us to, no board policy tonight, that takes us to items number one and two under General Business. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved. Second?
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg.
Clumper.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. That takes us now to personnel items, number one through five. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg.
Schrader.
Yes.
Clumper.
Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Saxor.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Three items there for information only, a couple maternity leaves and a transfer. That takes us to Board of Education, there are a couple thank you notes there from a couple individuals to the Board of Education. Good grief. That takes us to board reports, does anyone have a formal board report that they would like to present tonight? Okay, hearing none, that takes us to the end of our scheduled meeting, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg.
Schrader.
Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Clumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.